So I think we can let John know to go ahead and get us started and Caitlin can join in if she, when she gets here.
We're all set, Jess.
All right. Well, welcome back everyone. We are having the Normal Public Library Board Trustees Meeting for February twenty fourth at, starting at five thirty. And as the President of the Board of Trustees of Normal Public Library determined is prudent to meet virtually due to COVID nineteen. So with that, we'll go ahead and get started. Everybody take a look at the agenda. Do we have any corrections or additional? Oh, thank you. I even said about being online. I'm glad you're on top of it. Go ahead, J D.
Jess Ray.
Present.
Terry Lindberg.
Here.
Jim Rogal.
Here.
J D Davis, present. Caitlin Trunell?
Here.
Erin Ripley Gitaric, absent. Pam Lewis?
Here.
All right. Uh, so I was so excited to get started. I just dived right in there. And I also realized that earlier, I think I said, when Caitlin, I meant when Erin gets here. Sorry, I was looking right at Caitlin when I said that. So. Uh, review of agenda. Are there corrections or additions? Okay, hearing none. Moving on. Would someone like to approve the minutes of the previous meeting?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Pam, do we have a second?
Second.
No, Caitlin, you, you were, I heard you first, so give it to Caitlin there. Um, okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. J D, if you'd like to call vote.
Jess Ray.
Aye.
Terry Lindberg?
Aye.
Jim Rogal?
Aye.
An opportunity to take a look at the payroll and expenditures. Would someone like to move on that action item?
Um, I've moved to approve total expenditures of, let's see, seventy-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and forty-four cents. And two payrolls of one thousand four, forty-two, eight hundred ninety-three and four cents.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Pam. J D, uh, any further discussion? J D, would you like to call the vote, please?
Jess Ray.
Aye.
Terry Lindberg?
Aye.
Jim Rogal?
Yes.
J D Davis?
Aye.
Caitlin Trunell?
Aye.
Erin Ripley Gitaric? Pam Lewis?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you all very much. Uh, next item on our agenda is the President's Report. Mine will be brief. Uh, I would like to thank on behalf of all of the board, uh, the staff for their work on the annual report. Uh, very impressive. Uh, as I mentioned to Brian earlier, uh, you know, when you see it all in writing, you realize just what we had accomplished this year in spite of all the challenges that occurred. And I think the staff did an amazing job in responding to, as they say now, unprecedented times, which is I guess not precedent because we say that so much. Uh, but they, they did an amazing job. And, and I'd also like to thank our patrons for their understanding, their ability to work with us as we dealt with all these many different changes. And hanging in there with us as we tried new and exciting and different things. And so, um, I think it was a wonderful report. And I appreciate all the work because I know it doesn't just write itself, that, uh, the staff and you, Brian, everyone put into it. So thank you very much. So I believe we don't have any public comment today, so we will go ahead and move to Library Director's Report. Brian, what would you like to share with us this evening?
Well, I would just like to, uh, thank the board too, uh, for, you know, all of your support during this last year. It means so much to us in the community. So thanks for all your time and support and, uh, we couldn't have done it without you. So. A huge team effort and, uh, we'll talk about it on the agenda now, but it's, it is kind of daunting to look back and reflect on twenty twenty. So it feels good to be where we are now. Uh, let's see, the restroom project, hopefully this is the last time. Well, I'll talk about at least once more, but getting very close there, uh, waiting on door hardware still supposed to be installed March first. Uh, strategic planning process, excited to be where we are in that process. We'll talk about that more, uh, actually, you know, seek your approval tonight. Uh, really good process. Um, the budget goes to the council on March first, so that's very soon. Uh, ongoing used book sale is open for business, which is great. It's been busy and, uh, you know, very appreciated by the community. So it feels good. We are accepting donations too, so, uh, please feel free to bring in donations to us and we will get those turned around for the sale. Uh, per capita grant has been submitted to and accepted by the state libraries. That feels good. Annual library certification, uh, which is a new process this year, uh, that's been completed. So that feels good to have that done. Uh, the Wi-Fi assessment has been completed. We learned a lot of really good information there. And, uh, we've ordered the equipment to make the improvements and, uh, some of that should be arriving either late this week or early next week. Uh, so moving forward, that feels, feels great to improve that offering. Uh, really good news. We reduced the quarantine time, uh, down to one day instead of seven days. That's fantastic for our workflow. Uh, you may have noticed items, you know, lingering on your account after you return them as they sit there in quarantine. So this speeds up the process for all of us and, uh, it's just really, really a good thing. So we appreciate that. Working on a grant for lighting, changing all of our interior lighting over to, uh, LED bulbs, taking the ballasts out and bypassing those. So that's a, a big deal for us. Uh, should know more on that soon. And then just a reminder, this Friday, the Central Illinois Library Legislative Meetup is, uh, taking place via Zoom. Typically, you know, Normal is the, the host institution of this. We meet at the Marriott, but, um, it's a little bit different this year. And, uh, kudos to our staff, Emily Clye, Laura Goloshevsky, and John Fisher, all helping create a presentation. I sent an, uh, email out to all the attendees who are signed up for the Central Illinois event and asked for their stories and photos and stats, things like that. So that we can build a, a brief slideshow just representing library usage, uh, in Central Illinois during, uh, twenty twenty. So, uh, we'll show that on, on Friday and, uh, appreciate their work and, uh, yeah, I hope you can attend. Uh, it, it will not be recorded unfortunately. Uh, so it's, you do have to attend live if you want to be a part of it. So. Uh, I believe that's it. Unless there are any questions. Terry?
Have there been any changes in the budget since you first proposed it?
Uh, since I first proposed it, I believe, I believe that I proposed it with a flat property tax levy. And that's, that's where we are still flat. Yeah.
Any, any suspicion that you're going to get hit at the last minute?
I, I don't think so at this point. I feel like we're okay. Um. You know, the, we're, we're fortunate, I guess. This is one of those times where I guess, you know, having, relying on property taxes we do is, uh, you know, it's a very stable revenue. Uh, I think there's, you know, obviously there's less stability in the, uh, more elastic revenues like sales tax, hotel motel, food and beverage, all that. So. Um, I think that I, I feel like we're in a good spot right now. Based on what I know.
Who, who did the, uh, the, the Wi-Fi study for us?
Presidio. They're out of Peoria and that, uh, we learn of Presidio through, they do a lot of work for the town. So our systems are integrated with the town. So we're also doing, uh, an active directory merge with the town right now. Uh, Presidio did our network refresh, which was switches, firewall, et cetera. So they, uh, they came into it with good knowledge of, of our existing systems and the town infrastructure. So that was the most efficient way to get it done. And, and a trusted, uh, firm.
Thank you.
I got excited about the gadget that they were using. I thought that was kind of fun.
Yeah. If, if anyone's really interested in seeing the results of that study, let me know and I'll show you. There's a lot of heat mapping and it's very interesting. Uh, it's, it's not brief, but it's, uh, it's, it's, you know, we, we definitely got our, considering it was grant funded, we certainly got our money's worth out of the study. And now we'll pay to, you know, add some infrastructure, but, uh, a really, really good process and excited to move that forward.
Any further questions for Brian? Okay, hearing none. Going into Foundation Report. Do we have anything from Foundation to report on? Sorry, thank you.
Hi, John. Brian?
Okay, uh, just a heads up, we're, we're looking at, I believe it's, uh, April seventh is Library Giving Day. And that's something that we're exploring as potential initiative, uh, for the foundation. Uh, beyond that, nothing, nothing new. Uh, just a reminder that the foundation, um, sending out occasional emails. And, uh, if you look at, uh, normalpl.org/give, that'll take you to the foundation's web presence. And if you want to sign up for those emails, get occasional updates on the foundation, what it's doing. Um, if you want to make a donation, you can do that from our homepage or from that page as well. Um, so if you want to stay connected to the foundation, that's, that's a way to do that. Uh, a change we did make recently, we can do, uh, fundraisers directly through Facebook. So we, we plan to use that in the somewhat near future. It's a good tool for us and, uh, that's, that's an exciting step for us. So. Things are going well overall for the foundation.
Thank you. Do we have anything for Library Advocacy Report this evening?
Just a reminder, Jess, I think last time you asked for any interest, uh, from the board in, in, um, kind of stepping up to that role. I believe I just looked back to the minutes and I'm pretty sure you, you made that request.
You, you are correct.
I have some more to share on that, just real quick.
Well, and I will, I will put that request out yet again.
Okay. Uh, the, in the, in our strategic planning, we, we address advocacy planning. And then just a reminder, reminder that we, we did this back in March of twenty twenty as well. So getting a lot of good things in place there. Uh, there is the ILA event this Friday. Again, that's eight o'clock and, um, I've emailed you registration information. If you need that, please let me know and I'll help you get registered. Also, I just, I shared recently, there's a, a series of chamber events coming up. Uh, the most, uh, well, the only one really that has an identified date and time is the State of the County, St. McLean County event. So we have a couple trustees attending that. I will be as well. But just a reminder that, that opportunities out there as well.
Thank you very much. Uh, moving into new business, as you all have in the packet, we've got the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-four strategic plan. It is an action item this evening. Brian, what would you like to share about the action plan tonight?
So if you remember back to a month ago, uh, this didn't have near as much meat on it as it does now. So staff have done a great job, leadership team. Um, so Tori, John, Jennifer and Laura have done a great job helping move this forward. I talked to Sue Hall today. We've been back and forth to Sue and Tony a lot. Um, you know, our priorities represent what we're really trying to focus on. Patrons, uh, our community, our team, and then optimizing our resources. We have two strategies for each. We break those down a bit further. Uh, two things are, are happening now that you don't see reflected here. One is we're working on defining our organizational values. Which I think you can get a sense of, excuse me, through this plan. Then also an implementation plan. How do we actually take this plan forward, uh, give it a lot more definition and roles, responsibilities, timelines? So from this point forward through twenty twenty-four, how do we get these things done? So that's, that's what we're working on now. Hope to have that done by the end of March. Uh, I, I think it's a good plan. I feel that it serves the community well. One of my goals was to make this plan a little easier to remember than last plan. So that's again, what we have, you know, those priorities, uh, patron experience, community team, and then optimizing our resources. Uh, we feel that it's, uh, we've called out some good things that, that, uh, are important to the community and give us some flexibility moving forward. Appreciate the staff's input in this and the board's input, uh, you know, moving this forward too and sharing, uh, what you think you should see in here. So we hope that we've addressed all those needs.
So I, I hope that everyone's had an opportunity to take a good look. Uh, Pam has a question on the strategic plan.
It, would it be helpful to take that very robust annual report and circle items that meet our strategies? You know, the things that we're doing that meet those strategies and, and take a look at things that aren't circled that we either wouldn't continue or maybe wouldn't emphasize, you know, as much if it's not, you know, tied to, you know, our strategic, our strategic goals. Uh, it, I, but there's no reporting or action. It just might be a, a nice exercise to see, you know, what, what we're doing, what we're already doing, what we've done that meets what we're, where we're trying to go and, and, you know, look at the things that are still valuable, but maybe, um, aren't tied to those goals.
I, I think that's a great idea. And to additionally, we just went through that, that process of reviewing the state standards. And in there, we identified some, some things that we do well and some things that we could do a lot better on. So I think those two, the combination of those two things is great. And, and I always remind staff, you know, we, we don't want to, we're not looking to weaken our strengths in any ways. We want to be careful where we're there. We want to keep those strengths, you know, going, going well. And, um, and another, uh, piece worth mentioning, I, I've mentioned a lot about organizational capacity. That, um, we, we can't just keep adding things. We have to be careful that we, uh, have a good, healthy balance, I think, in terms of, of our, you know, we have a fairly small staff considering all that we, we do and the number of hours that we're open. So, uh, just trying to keep everybody healthy there and keep, keep plates kind of where they should be, um, not overloaded. So. But I think that's a great idea. I think we do that. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussions on the strategic plan? Hearing none. It is an action item. I think we would like to confirm that this is the direction we want to go. So would someone like to move that we accept the strategic plan as presented?
So moved.
Okay. And I see a second from Terry. So it'll move by Pam, second by Terry. Uh, J D, would you be so call, kind as to call the vote?
Jess Ray.
Aye.
Terry Lindberg?
Yes.
Jim Rogal?
Yes.
J D Davis?
Yes.
Caitlin Trunell?
Yes.
Erin Ripley Gitaric? Absent. Pam Lewis?
Yes.
The ayes have it. Uh, again, thanks, Brian. I know that, uh, you and the team did a lot of work and a lot of time and, uh, thought into this. And I think it's a very good document and I think it'll be very helpful as we move forward.
Thank you. And we, I will share too, that, you know, when we started this process, it was pre-pandemic and we, we talked, do we hit the brakes? How do we move forward? I'm glad that we moved forward. Uh, it was very insightful to do this process during a pandemic. We learned a lot. I think we came away better as a result of doing that. So, and I appreciate all the board's work and time on this too. Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, next is our COVID, our, what is now seen to be one of our annual items for discussion, uh, COVID nineteen update. Uh, is there anything on the COVID nineteen update that you would like to highlight?
Yeah, I'd just like to share that it, it's going well. You know, I, I think this time certainly feels better than when we were open previously. So that's good. Excuse me, uh, a good steady, steady flow. Uh, patrons are, uh, you know, adhering to our guidelines of, um, grab and go. So that's good. Uh, we've made it through some challenging weather, you know, in the recent past. So that's good too. Uh, but just, I, I think everybody feels good. We're cautiously optimistic. I think that's fair to say. I hear a lot of questions about vaccines, you know, for library workers throughout the state. Um, no good answer there. We've, we've made a request of, of the county health department and, uh, excuse me, no news there. You know, our library workers, one B or one C. Um, we're told one C at the, at the moment. Uh, we'll see. You know, obviously the, the major challenge there is just supply challenge. Uh, so, uh, but there's a, certainly a lively discussion going on. Not just among, you know, library workers, but lots of, uh, public facing staff, obviously, just to kind of figure out when, when that happens. I will share though, that we have a number of staff who are getting vaccinated, uh, for a variety of reasons. You know, they're, they're meeting other criteria. So. Some of our staff are getting vaccinated currently. So.
Thank you. Any questions for Brian related to COVID? Uh, when will it stop? No, I'm just kidding. That's one Brian can answer for us. Uh, moving now to, uh, we referenced this a couple times already tonight. Another discussion item was the twenty twenty Normal Public Library Annual Report. Uh, many of us have seen it and take a look. This is a discussion item. Uh, would anyone, Brian, would you like to start anything out? And would anyone have anything they'd like to share?
Yeah. Again, thanks to the community, you know, for, for their patience with us as we, as we figured this out and to the board for supporting us. Uh, kudos to the staff. We're a great job. Uh, as always, you know, it's, I'm always amazed. Um, one of the first steps in this process, I just sit down and, and make a list of, you know, all that we've done and then we start to build off that and then other departments report in. Um, so I want to thank Emily, you know, our graphic designer for making it look amazing as always. And, uh, Laura, uh, took a lot of content and brought it together. John and Tori and Jennifer provided a lot of content. So, and you know, as usual, a, a great team effort there and a great product. Um, so I appreciate that. It's just amazing. We, we look back all that we did. Um, and a lot of challenging variables, you know, to think about like early COVID, just trying to figure out some very basic things. Uh, the restroom project is in there. A lot of facility stuff is in there. Um, figuring out curbside, going through various quarantine, you know, different, uh, numbers of days there in terms of quarantine. Lots of technology challenges. You know, programming, switching to virtual and then some grab and go stuff, some drive up stuff, greatly expanding curbside. Um, so just really, really proud of, of the staff and, you know, the organization, uh, in a challenging year. So thanks to the board for, for all your support. We appreciate it.
Any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. Next item on, uh, new business is exec, going into executive section, session, section two C one for personnel. Uh, before we do that, I usually like session, section two C1 for personnel. Uh, before we do that, I usually like to state for anybody who's watching from home this evening, or, um, might have been in person with us if we were in person, that, uh, our agenda, there is no additional business once we come out of executive session. Uh, we don't have any unfinished business on the agenda. It says none. Uh, we do ask about any suggested items for next agenda, but that's not a business item. That's just a, a recommendation. And just so that those folks who might be interested, our next meeting date will be March 31st. It's our regular meeting. And so typically what we would have happen after we come out of the executive session is adjournment. So with that in mind, JD, uh, would you like to start the magic that happens for us to go into executive session?
Uh, well, I move to go into executive session to discuss section two, C1, personnel. Um, Brian Chase's review.
Do we have a second? Thank you, Jim. Jim is our second.
Okay. So to go in, we need a roll call. To be in, we need a roll call. To leave, we need a roll call. Here we go. Jess Ray.
Present.
Terry Lindberg.
You're muted, Terry.
I see.
Yes.
Okay. Jim Rogow.
Yes.
JD Davis, present. Caitlin Trunell.
Here.
Erin Ripley Gitaric, absent. Pam Lewis.
Yes.
All right. We move into executive session at 5:55.
Just a reminder, Jess, there is a delay. John will let us.
So much. Took us just a few seconds. So we finished with that in the executive session. We don't have any additional unfinished business. Does anyone have any suggested items for the next agenda? Pam?
Uh, and I don't know if there will be, but if we could get an update on the website analysis and, I don't know if there's development in the works, but I- I don't know if there's development in the works, but I just wonder how that's going.
Uh, I can share that's, the results of that study Pam, if you'd like to see the report.
Yeah, I just wondered what the next steps are.
Are we out of executive session?
We are.
We have to roll call again.
Oh, sorry.
Hold on. We have to prove that we didn't move in a minute.
Yes.
Jess Ray.
Uh, present.
Ju, Terry Lindberg.
Present.
Jim Rogal.
Present.
JD Davis, present. Ca, I was waiting. Caitlin Trunell?
Present.
Erin Ripley Gitarik?
Present.
Pam Lewis?
Present.
Thank you. Sorry.
All right. So no, Brian, uh, let's not, we don't need it now, but I, I just wondered if we could have an update.
Yeah. Real quick, I'd say we, we, uh, got our web team back together who developed the current site and we meet next week to determine exactly what we're going to do.
Great. Thank you.
Uh, Jess, just a reminder, we'll do the six month review of executive session minutes, uh, next month.
Oh, good. Cause I couldn't have come at the same time that we were doing something else. That was already an executive session. That would be too logical.
Yes.
Oh goodness. Uh, cause, yes. I feel like I've said present more times for that than in a while. So, uh, next meeting date is, uh, March 31st, 2021. And, uh, hearing no additions for the agenda, move to adjourn. Or I'll just take executive. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thanks, everyone. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.